Good morning, everyone. Please stand for pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We approve the minutes for the November 4th meeting.
Move to approve, second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All business. HIPAA officer appointment. We tabled this at the, I believe it was the last meeting. To make sure we had all of our information together. The motion that I'm going to make is that the Boone County Auditor, a HIPAA officer for Boone County, HIPAA law, Boone County stuff there, HIPAA laws require the limited share of personal health information in a need-to-know basis, on a need-to-know basis. As the auditor will have responsible, will be responsible for putting funds into the HSA account for members who have done, who have, who have had a procedure done at Wellbridge Surgery Center. She will be available, will have knowledge of which family had the qualified surgery and needs access to which family qualifies for that contribution. Making her the HIPAA officer with access to very limited PHI in order to perform her function as auditor will protect Boone County from violating the HIPAA regulations. That is my motion.
Second.
It's open for discussion. Anything? Hearing none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Very good. All right, new business. Get bids open. The fuel, the annual fuel bid is going to be taken off the table today and delayed for a while. That's the best I can say.
Can I just make a motion to table the fuel bid indefinitely?
There we go. Yes. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Now we'll go to the bid openings.
Okay, with that tabled, the first one is project 2022-2024-04 Crack Sealing in Various Townships. Okay, first bid received from All-Star Paving, November 15th at 11:00 a.m. Bid is in the amount of $189,330. One eight nine three three zero. Next bid is from Free Hill Asphalt, received November 15th at 10:45 a.m. Bid is $102,334. One oh two three three four. Next bid is from Howard Companies, received November 18th today at 8:30. Bid is in the amount of $224,220. Two two four two two zero. Next bid from HSC Pavement Maintenance, received November 18th at 8:14. Bid in the amount of $274,298.75. Two seven four two nine eight seven five. And the last bid on this project is from Pavement Solutions Inc., received November 15th at 1:47 p.m. Their bid is in the amount of $160,299.66. One six zero two nine nine point six six. Recommend a motion to take this under advisement for review by the Highway Department.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next is project 2024-07 Rejuvenating Surface Treatment in Various Locations. Only one bid received on this project, and it's from RejuvTech, received November 14th at 3:09 p.m. Their bid is in the amount of $818,271.40. There's a base bid and four alternates. Again, those total $818,271.40. Eight one eight two seven one point four oh. Also recommend a motion to take this bid under advisement for review by the Highway Department.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And the third bid opening is project 2025-02 Asphalt Resurfacing in Various Townships. First bid is from Reeve Riley, received November 15th at 2:15. There's a base bid and quite a few alternates. I will just read the total. Their bid is $3,020,000. Three zero two zero 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 zero. Next bid is from Baumgart. Total base bid plus all the alternates is $2,871,953.2. Two eight seven one nine five three point zero two. Next bid is from Calumet, received November 18th at 8:08. Total base bid plus all the alternates, $3,237,575,000. Two, or I'm sorry, three, two three seven five seven five. Next bid is from E&amp;B Paving, received November 18th at 8:22. Total base bid plus all the alternates, $3,466,211.53. Three four six six two one one point five three. Next bid is from Grady Brothers, received November 18th at 7:57 a.m. Total of the base bid plus all the alternates, $3,039,211.90. Three zero three nine two one one point nine oh. Next bid is from Midwest Paving, received November 18th at 8:03 a.m. Total of the base bid plus all the alternates, $3,132,899.65. Three one three two eight nine nine point six five. And one more bid, which is from Milestone, received November 18th at 8:03. Total of the base bid plus all alternates, $2,947,300. Two nine four seven three zero zero. Recommend a motion to take bids under advisement for review by the Highway Department.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, next bid opening is on 2025-02. Oh, no, we already did that. Never mind. Legal issues there.
Yes, I just got a couple of things, the first of which is the release of performance bonds for Park 133 Infrastructure Storm Sewers and Erosion Control totaling $119,522.14. Projects been inspected by the Surveyor's Office, and they recommend the release of the performance bonds.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And the second thing is a debarment and suspension certification. This is required annually to be signed by yourselves and the Boone County Area Transit Doing Business of Boone County Senior Services. They require each year that the grantee, which is you all, and your subrecipient, which is BCSSI, sign a certification that you are not currently ineligible or voluntarily excluded from entering into an agreement by any federal agency. And Anita signed it, and I recommend your signature.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And that's all I have for legal issues.
All right. Boone County Extension, Judy Wilson. Is she here? She is. There she is.
Good morning. My name is Judy Wilson, and I am the county president of the Boone County Extension Homemakers. I come before you today to tell you about wreaths across America. In 1992, Worcester wreaths found themselves with a surplus of wreaths nearing the end of the holiday season. Arrangements were made with Arlington National Cemetery to place these wreaths on one of the older sections that had been, that had not been receiving any visitors. A local trucking company generously provided transportation from Maine all the way to Virginia. For over a decade, these annual tributes went on quietly and privately. Everything changed in 2005, when a photo of the gravestones adorned with the wreaths covered in snow circulated around the internet. Thousands of requests poured in from all over the United States from people who wanted to help purchase and lay the wreaths at Arlington. In 2007, the Worcester family formed a 501(c)(3) organization with a simple mission, remember, honor, teach. The wreath lane that started over 30 years ago is still held annually in December nationwide. Wreaths Across America is committed to teaching all generations about the value of their freedoms and the importance of honoring those who sacrifice so much to protect those freedoms. Wreaths Across America would not be successful without the help of volunteers and organizations who support the mission. The Boone County Extension Homemakers are excited to remember and honor our veterans for the very first time in December 2024. This particular community service project has never been in Boone County. We are encouraging residents to sponsor a wreath for their veteran that will be placed on their tombstone in one of the Boone County cemeteries. We are asking residents to volunteer on Saturday, December 14th, in placing these wreaths on the veteran graves. And we are asking Boone County to support this community service project. Today, I am asking permission from the commissioners that we can place six ceremonial wreaths on the courthouse lawn on Sunday, December 15th. These wreaths will represent Air Force, Army, Coast Guard, Marine Corps, Navy, and Space Force. It is hoped that we will have a short ceremony with local veterans placing the wreaths. There will be a yard sign nearby explaining the significance of the wreaths. We will remove the ceremonial wreaths before the end of the year. Thank you for your consideration. I do have flyers about wreaths across America that is happening nationwide and in Boone County. I also have order forms for anyone who is wanting to sponsor a wreath, and I'd be happy to add your name to our list of volunteers. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Judy, have you met with our Veterans Officer about this at all?
We have discussed this with Mike Spidey. He has no opinion either way.
Okay.
We have contacted several of the ceremonies in Boone County. To participate, you have to have a host cemetery, and so we do have some relationship with Roston Cemetery on 421, and they are our host cemetery. So if you do go to the QR code and you log in, you will notice that it just says Roston Cemetery, but we are, our intent is to cover any Boone County cemetery. Let me just throw in also that several people have said, well, my veteran was cremated, and we can make those arrangements also. You can pick a wreath up, and then you can take it to wherever you want for that person.
I don't see, Max, you have any issues with it? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, John Larson, you're next on the agenda.
Good morning. John Larson, representing the Area Plan Commission. We've been utilizing the services of Depp Blue Zero as a temporary executive director of the Area Plan Commission for a number of months now while we sought applicants from qualified candidates. We haven't received any applicants from qualified candidates, and in effort to lend some stability to our relationship with Depp, we would like to enter into a contractual relationship with her on a monthly basis rather than hourly. It's hourly, just, it's still hourly, and the rate is the same, but it is extending or granting a six-month period where we won't move to replace her with, if we have a qualified candidate, which we're finally going to get. So at the last Area Plan Commission meeting, we unanimously voted that we were in favor of entering into contractual relationship with her. Like I say, it is for a six-month period. The hourly rate remains the same at $150 an hour. The maximum is $11,000 per month. That would be the same as 73.3 hours of work or about 18 and 1/3 hours per week, which is what she is currently doing. One of the new responsibilities of this would, she would be overseeing Kirby and actually the two staff members of the office, and would essentially serve as the, excuse me, as the office manager for the department. So, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, Max?
Does that start now, John, or do you?
Yeah, that's a good question. Do we want to make it, so the contract is written is an October start date, but I would suggest a December 1st start date?
It's November 1st. What was the, who proposed the start date?
In the, in the, in the draft contract, it was October.
Okay.
But since it's November 18th, it seems appropriate to me that we scratch it out to December 1st as a start date.
Don't accept. Does money have to be moved for that, Debbie? Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's your motion.
Yeah, I'll man the motion. It started December 1st.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Good morning. So we're going to have a proposal from Veritas Group to help us put together a scope and get us, help, assist us through the RFP/RQ process for the Key Bank Building renovation. Basically, it would include working with Prosecutor's Office and other stakeholders to be able to renovate that building to be a more efficient office. Council has given us, I think, $250,000 for this, go towards this project for the upcoming year. And unless you guys have any questions on it, about the scope of the...
I did have my normal changes to the standard terms and conditions, but outside of that, I'd recommend approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Veritas proposal.
I mean, the only comment I have is, it's November 18th. This is going to be a project that's going to occur largely over Scott Pell's term, and I just think you ought to be a part of it. I mean, Phase 1 services are proposed from December 2024 to May 2025. I mean, what's the harm in waiting until January?
No issue there at all. We can, I mean, if we can get it approved and go ahead, I mean, we can wait to start and include that in the process, including in the process. I don't have concern with that, but we'd like to get it under contract.
I mean, is there a reason to get it under contract now as opposed to January, or?
Just trying to get it locked in, get it in on their schedule.
Encombre funds.
Encombre funds.
So it's going to be the same results whether we, if we, they will not start till January then, is what you're asking? If we approve it, and then we move forward, then it's locked in.
Yeah, and the request is that we don't start the process until January. I'm sure Veritas won't have an issue with that.
They don't start till January, or we don't need funds until January 1?
We wouldn't be built till first of the year anyway at this point.
Right, I mean, there's, yeah, and no encombre, so.
All right. All right, I assume that, that you don't want to second the motion?
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking the question, what's the difference between approving it now and January? Does it really affect anything? Moving on it now, between now, now or January, when Scott's in office?
Makes no difference to me. It just gets Veritas started on putting together information, but...
Well, I'm the one that'll make the decision here on whether to second or not, because I don't, I see both sides, but I think Veritas needs to, needs to be signed into contract. And then their, their project will start after January 1. So I will second the motion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, aye?
Aye.
If Scott has questions, he's more, I mean, you can reach out to me, he's up there. Thank you.
All right, next on the list is Area Plan Commission Order.
Yes, so at the November 6th meeting of the Plan Commission, they approved an order approving the economic development area that was established through a declaratory resolution from the Redevelopment Commission in their October meeting. The statutory procedure is to establish an economic development area. The Redevelopment Commission has to adopt a declaratory resolution, which they did. It then needs to go to the Plan Commission for them to approve it, which they did. Then it comes to you also to approve the Area Plan's order in the establishment of the economic development area. And it will go back to the Redevelopment Commission at their December meeting, I think it's December 20th, present to all the public hearing, and if they so choose at that point, then they would adopt a confirmatory resolution. This economic development area essentially runs north to south, 450 north to about 750 north, and then east to west, the CSX railroad tracks, just east of Wood Road, running west all the way over to 350 west. And this is the third step in the statutory process. If you adopt this resolution, the Redevelopment Commission will publish a notice of public hearing for their meeting. I believe it's December 20th, third Friday of the month. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I don't have any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-05.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the next one.
This is Ordinance 2024-08. It's the prepay ordinance that has been amended. It was originally adopted in 2001. It's been amended multiple times since then. And this particular amendment allows for payment to publishers of periodicals and newspapers for advertising costs. We frequently have to advertise notices of public meetings and/or public hearings in the Lebanon Reporter or other newspapers, and this would allow those to be prepaid. So again, this is Ordinance 2024-08, ordinance amending Ordinance 2001-19 and other ordinances, and ordinance allowing county funds to be dispersed by a dispersing officer for lawful county purposes.
Questions?
I've moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, next is Veritas Group Recommendation Letter for the fueling station.
This is a recommendation received by Matthew Mason, project executive with Veritas. The total amount from Hagerman's estimate for the fueling station is $1,948,532. Design has been completed. You had previously approved the design. This again would come out of the bond project funds. And that amount is $1,948,532.
Just to clarify how this is being paid for, because there seems to be some misunderstandings. Upon selling of the bonds, we received a premium due to lots of bidders on our bonds. And so we had, we actually sold, in the bond sale, I think it was close to four times as much bond as, as we had available. And so the most responsible bidders were chosen. They paid a premium, which, Matt, you might have taught me with the numbers, but I believe it was $2.7 million in the premium amount originally. And then since that time, that bond has earned, where it's set at Bank of New York, has earned about $2.5 million in interest up to this point. We expect it to earn a total of somewhere around $3 million by the end of the period when the projects turned over. So this fueling station was a project that goes back many years, something that, that Donnie has wanted to do for a long time, at the, started at the Highway Department. This became an opportunity for us to do it in a way that made it easier for all county vehicles to use it. And therefore, we decided to make it part of the project. But it is not jail lit funds going to this. It's issuance from the bond and interest from the bond. And after this 1.948,532 project cost, there will still be... One point nine four eight five thirty two project cost, there will still be. Money available to turn back to the principal bond from the interest and the premium. So this is a, a project that we felt like was important. And it pays itself back over a number of years, that's kind of hard to say because of fuel prices, exactly how many years that is. But you know, somewhere in the neighborhood fourteen or fifteen years, it'll pay itself back, just in fuel savings. Cause of this, with this project, we'll be able to purchase fuel in bulk as opposed to at the pump. So that's kind of the, the description of the process we've been through.
Jeff is correct, we, we have been looking at this for a long time, trying to figure out where the best place was to build it. And, and with all the construction going on out there by the jail, it, it, it just made sense to put it between. The justice center and the highway department, instead of having to rent a gas stations all the time to, to take care of this. And like you said, we will have storage, I think, is it twelve thousand gallons or is it fifteen thousand on the tanks?
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand, okay. So we can buy, buy, buy the, the truckloads semi-load, get bids from that every time that we, we need fuel. We'll be able to monitor that twenty four hours a day, seven days a week on where our fuel's at, and always make sure that we have plenty of supply in there for, for all of our vehicles.
Additionally, too, of course, the, the justice center has two huge generators. They run on diesel obviously, and this will also be able to supply those generators in the event that they are. But it was always contemplated as part of this project, we just weren't sure whether or not there was gonna be enough money left over to pay for it. And because of the bond premiums as well as the interest generated, the money's available, so move forward.
Something that we've not had in the past, that opportunity, so.
Excuse me, Kent Hedge, County Council President, the only thing I have to say is that we did ask for the project to be put on hold. I know you guys are moving forward, I just wanted that to be a part of the record, that that was something that the council did request.
What's the reason?
That's all I have to say.
What's the reason for it?
Just to look at it, you know, so, I'm just telling you that that's what we asked, so, but you guys are gonna do what you're gonna do, so. I just wanted to be part of the record that that was the request.
I mean, I was, the only comment I'll make is I, I would like to. I did ask that we have a meeting before this come up for a vote, just to go through the project in a little more detail for my benefit before I vote on it. I mean, it, it may, it may be justified, I mean, based on some of the preliminary information that I've given. There, there is certainly some cost savings. I would just like to have better understand of that before we make a vote on a nearly two million dollar project.
Well, the option would be is that we delay this until the next meeting and then move forward with the, the vote then, and that would give you time to, to look through all the details on it. Before, before we sign the contract, because we have everything here, all the details of it, so we can.
The only thing I'll express is a little bit of frustration is this fueling station was discussed as a part of this project from the beginning. And, and don't shake your head because it was. And it's just. Yeah, and, and council meetings, several of them. And it's just frustrating that everybody just acts like all of a sudden it's a surprise.
Well. I guess the decision we have to make here today is, is if we want to delay it until December, the first meeting in December, which will be, what's the date on that?
E. Believe.
December second.
Second.
December second, yeah.
All right, that's two weeks away. Then we'll. We'll delay it until you have the time to go over this information here in the next two weeks, and we'll sit down and talk about it, and then make our decision on December second. I guess we do need to make a motion, then yes, that's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, Clark Dietz.
This is a master services agreement with Clark Dietz, which is an engineering firm that we've used on several occasions. It's a standard on-call agreement that we have with other engineering firms, it's not to exceed fifty thousand dollars without separate written agreement. But primarily for the purposes of smaller projects that come up. Culver Design, Bridge Design, probably not a bridge design, but Culver Design or other small projects. I know the highway department's been very happy with the services from Clark Dietz, and so they've offered a standard on-call agreement. Anytime they utilize, or want to utilize the services, they would put in a task order, much the same as Butler Fairman does or other engineering firms. I've reviewed the agreement and would recommend your approval.
Right, need a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
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 All right, Nick, you're next on the list.
Nick Barbour, County Highway. First item I have is a agreement for the replacement of Culver HA zero one five and PE zero zero one. These are projects we opened bids on at the last meeting. The low bidder was Crackers Demo Inc., the total amount for those two projects is six hundred and ninety four thousand one hundred and fifty nine dollars and eighty four cents. These are ARP funded projects. The two structures are on County Route five hundred south, between County Route two hundred east and County Route fifty east. Along the Belt Ditch that is part of maintenance that is also being done with ARP funds to this or air jobs. Requesting execution of that agreement is on our standard contract we have for our construction projects.
Can I ask a quick question? There's a little bit of a discrepancy in the contract. It's worded, the total amount is six hundred and ninety one thousand fifty nine dollars and eighty four cents. But numerically, it says six hundred and ninety four thousand, is it six ninety one or six ninety four?
Six ninety four, one fifty nine eighty four.
I will make that change.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
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 The next one is for projects twenty twenty four dash fourteen and twenty twenty four dash fifteen, the, the small structures. MA zero zero two and MA zero zero three with Canesco Inc., they were the low bidder on those two projects. These are two metal pipes that are being replaced on County Route twelve hundred east on the Pearson drain. This is also ARP funded projects, the total amount for these two projects is two hundred and twenty eight thousand nine hundred and twenty seven dollars.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next one is twenty twenty four dash sixteen and seventeen, they're small structures JA zero zero five and JA zero two seven. The low bidder on this was Old Coke. Total amount for these two projects, it's four hundred and sixty seven thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and seventy seven cents. These are on, one of them is on six fifty west, south of two hundred south, and the other one is on Middle Jamestown Road, west of six hundred west. These are all small structures that were inspected, have been weight rated, have significant deficiencies, have been listed as being replaced for a number of years. These are also ARP funded projects.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The next two items are bridge repair projects that were brought to our attention by our bridge inspection firm. We might have looked at them ourselves, our team out, checked into the ones that they coded as needing repair. These two came up as more urgent, Bridge ninety one and Bridge one hundred. So Bridge one hundred is on County Route four fifty north, between two seventy five west and three fifty west, it is on the north side of the Trumpi Club. This bridge is over Prairie Creek, has significant issues with the, it's not structurally impacted, but it's where the approach is losing its backfill. It's been added on to over time, and there's some pretty good sized holes underneath it in the mud wall that holds the backfill. And that's how it developed, a quite large hole at the edge of the pavement, between the pavement and the guardrail. So we have reached out to get a quote for the repairs on Bridge one hundred, total amount of the quote is forty five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And they think they can get started on it within the next few weeks, it's gonna cost a three week closure. While they do the work, they have to be sitting up on top of the bridge, remove some guardrail, and work underneath the bridge to cap the holes and then do all the backfill work. So the request is for the execution of the agreement for E and B to do the repairs on Bridge one hundred.
So, so they will, they are gonna do it that yet this year?
Yes, they're gonna, they're planning to start December third, if we can get the executed agreement, get mobilized out there. That was a part of our concern is how fast can we get it done? We could obviously throw more material in the hole, but it was doing is running down in the stream, and that's all gonna have to be removed from the stream and make the work even worse, more expensive, costly to repair.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Bridge ninety one is on Wiseville Road, between two twenty five east and two fifty east, over Brown's Wander Ditch. This one has significant undermining at the invents, the stream doesn't meet the bridge, doesn't go straight underneath the bridge, there's, it's kind of on a skew. And there's erosion underneath the vents, and what's causing is, is again, not a structural issue where the bridge is gonna fall in, but where the approaches get holes in it. And they continually get patched, this one's had obvious patch attempts underneath it in the past. So in order to fix it right, there's gonna have to be some removal of the guardrail, get underneath the bridge, takes equipment, materials that we don't have available at the highway department. Be able to do this project, the total amount for this one, three and B paving to repair, repair the bridge is forty nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. These would both be paid for with underruns on other projects, we reappropriate the funds to bridge repairs to be able to make these repairs this year and get them taken care of.
Just same question, they're gonna do it this year?
Yeah, they plan to do both closures at the same time, so they're not adjacent to each other, but they're gonna cause a significant traffic issue for possibly three weeks. But a good time of year to get that done, before we get the cold temperatures, they have crews available that can mobilize quickly to get out there and get it taken care of.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Well, while you're there. Continue on with the staff reports.
Items in my report, Task one hundred fifty for Butler Fairman Cypher, part-time inspection. We have those, those small structures that we just referenced, there's six of those, this would be on a strict and part-time basis as needed during construction. Requesting execution of the task order for them to perform part-time inspection on MA oh two, MA oh three, HA fifteen, PE oh one, JA oh five, JA oh twenty seven. And EA oh twenty one, which is another small structure that's slated to be repaired in Pine View off of Ninety Sixth Street. We have big windows for construction on these projects to try to reduce the cost, which was effective in getting a lot of bids. However, it makes it a challenge to schedule inspections because we don't know exactly when that contractor's gonna mobilize to do that work at this stage. So our intent is for, you know, those two project, or all those projects to be completed within the next twenty four months. The ARP funds, of course, are required to have those expenses completed, and EA oh twenty one is going to be a community crossings project. They submitted proposal for construction oversight and inspection needs, to be twenty thousand dollars each, those are hourly and not to exceed. We found that we've ran under on, on several of these in the past, just depends on the contractor and weather and various other factors that are beyond our control. So the total amount for the task orders, a hundred and forty thousand dollars for seven structures at twenty thousand dollars each.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Another item I had, I'm not sure if I covered the maintenance bond acceptance for Beck Superior Hybrids, they submitted one. For three road cuts on County Route eight fifty north, between two hundred east and three hundred east, they did some drainage work. And part of the requirements were to get maintenance bonds, requesting acceptance of those.
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The next item is a right-of-entry agreement for lot two, which is across from the highway department. The contractor that is working on rural broadband, has significant amount of materials and equipment in various parts of the county. They're working here centrally, they want to be able to park some of their trucks from now until the end of the year. So this is a right-of-entry agreement that we've created, a standardized form, worked with Bob to get the language in there, and we're just requesting execution of that.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item for consideration is project twenty twenty two dash oh six, which is Bridge nineteen, recently reopened those bridges. It's on ten seventy five west, north of forty seven. On, during the final inspection, we found an area that needed additional work, that wasn't, wasn't known during design. Really wasn't an issue during construction, but as the hydro demo and the new latex modified overlay raises the grade of the bridge by about three quarters of an inch. And this bridge is on a super elevated curve, it was gonna make an area where water was gonna stand underneath the guardrail. So we've come up with a solution to apply material that'll eliminate the water run all the way off of the bridge, so that the water will stand on the bridge deck underneath the guardrail. That total repair for that was gonna be four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which is gonna be a change order. We already had a significant underrun on the bridge for approximately thirty thousand dollars, so we're still way under original contract amount, but it is a change order because we've already done a previous change order. So requesting execution of change order number two for Bridge nineteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Other item I had, I don't know if it needs action, ARP fund adjustments, so this is all within the small structures, talked to Tim after the last meeting. We had moved the funds at the last meeting to small structures, but after the bids were known, we needed to move a little bit around between the small structures. So it's not moving from small structures to rehabilitation or bridge replacements, so I don't know if that takes official action, or if you want to discuss the exact amounts that need to be moved. For ARP funds. I don't know how it was laid out. For the ARP funds in the small structures, do we need to move around the amounts to the specific small structures? Okay. Okay, provided the list to the auditor's office for what they were gonna be, and now that we got the contracts, we can provide a list also for when we start getting claims, that those can be paid, just wanted to check on that. No other items to discuss or for consideration, just wanna let you know that County Route three hundred north has been reopened, east of one fifty west, City of London project. Three hundred north is a main artery that runs from thirty nine to fifty two, they have roundabout open to traffic, they're still ongoing construction out there, it is not complete, but it has been. Improved a little bit with some striping that's been added and some signs, there was a significant amount of confusion when it first opened, I think motors were a little bit confused and worried of travel, so has been reopened, just wanted to pass that along.
And no stoplights?
The stoplight has now been removed, they did bag it initially, covered it, but you can still see it, still had stop signs, stoplight and roundabout, it was very confusing.
But now there's no stop signs for three hundred?
There's a stop sign on one fifty for northbound, but three hundred north no longer has a stop control at that intersection, it is used around about for. Going through there, and then to get to one fifty going north, you have to go through the roundabout, but that's not completely clear, at this point, there's still barricades that many motors are driving around and through the off-road, down the dirt road section, so it's an ongoing project.
Are they going to put a guardrail around that detention bond that's right there?
I do not know. Maybe bollards to be is what the choice is, but I'm not sure if that's been, um.
Because that's right next to it. I mean, granted, it's not very deep, but somebody's going to wind up in that if they don't.
So, when you have a curb and gutter section, it does change the clear zone requirements. Um, not sure what that one is at this point. I know it's ongoing and they still have not completed everything. Um, but someone can look at the plan and see if they intend to add bollards.
Is that roundabout our responsibility as far as snow and ice and?
Our, we have responsibility south of one fifty on three hundred and we have just a few hundred feet, uh, west of one fifty on three hundred. Um, and the rest of three hundred north is all within the City of Lebanon's control.
And the roundabout is all Lebanon's?
All Lebanon's control on the roundabout. One fifty going north of there is all Lebanon's control.
Good. Thanks. All right, are you a plan? Nothing for that. Max, do you have some things for us?
Yes, first additional item, uh, the facilities department is starting to utilize, uh, new software for asset management and, uh, work order tracking. So, today, maybe Friday, last Friday, um, employees should have started seeing an icon pop up on their, on their computer screens with the Maintain X logo that says facilities request underneath it. So, just wanted to let all employees know that, and we'll get an email out today also, that if you have any, um, needs for, for our, for the maintenance department, and that's our new way of tracking those, so please use that Maintain X, uh, work order system. I think IT, if they haven't already done it, they're going to take the old work order request down from the website as well. So, um, that's out there. And then, um, quick update on jail project. Uh, we are at eighty-six percent on that project, uh, moving along pretty quick. Again, a lot of the same. We're, uh, still putting finishings in, building A and B, upper and lower levels. Those are getting very close to, uh, punch walks and final inspection. Uh, we did do final inspection in the kitchen and infirmary. Uh, we are, we've started owner training. So, we are probably within a, I'll say a week or so turnover on that and utilizing that and then starting the demo in the existing jail. If you haven't got up there and take a look at it, uh, coroner's offices coming together. A lot of these places are, all of the buildings are coming together with the flooring and finishing. All of the FFNE equipment, we're starting to take delivery of also. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Health Department, Doc, do you have anything for us? Human Resources, nothing. IT? Nothing, nothing from IT? Thank you. Elected officials, anyone?
Yeah, I do have two contracts, um, for the two projects, the Lochner and the Fruity. Um, as you know, those contracts were awarded to, um, those jobs were awarded to Murphy Construction and Howard, um, I think it's Howard Asphalt LLC. Um, we have contract agreements here that need to be signed by the, the board. So, those are the only two things that I have, so.
Any other elected officials?
There's no motion on that, right?
Do you need a motion?
All right. Public comment.
Doc Morrison, Random Equipment employee, uh, a question about the fuel station. Knowing that I'm on the county contract for our ambulances and our hospital vehicles, what's the mechanism going to be, um, for our payment? Do we have to buy in advance? Do you have a vendor, electronic vendor that's going to submit invoices on a monthly basis? How's that going to work out?
Yeah, we will have a fuel monitoring system out there and we'll know by vehicle and employee code, uh, who's purchasing fuel and we can track that. I know for internally for the county, it was, the idea was just, we were just going to kind of take everybody's funds that they're already budging for and use one fund to make those payments. Uh, you guys would be, be a little separate, but would have to look into whether that would be billed or how it would be billed.
And the guest senior services would be on the same contract too, so there's at least two outside, you can see some that have an interest in, uh, what the, what the financials look like on that. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right. We're going to document signing claims.
Got, uh, a couple of claims. The first is a, uh, this is out of the twenty-fourteen COVID bond. It's to Loch Mueller Group. A claim in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. It was for Culver Replacement SC zero one five on nine hundred north. And the ratification of the claim, that was approved by Commissioner Wolf. This comes out of the. And then, uh, this is ratification of a claim to GM Development on the Justice Center project. Draw request number twenty-four in the amount of one million, five hundred and six thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-three cents.
Those are all ratifications?
This one is the ratification. The first one is just, uh, approval of the claim for two hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
I'll move to approve the claim to Loch Mueller.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And this is the ratification for, uh, GM Development.
Move to ratify.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then we've got the usual claims.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And terms of mail, not much, just some notifications from IDAM, bond renewal. That's about it.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for being here this morning.